Public service announcements. Case of an emergency, would everyone please exit the chamber? Proceed down the right or left stairwell to the ground floor, exit the building to allow for emergency personnel to enter. We have a sign up sheet at the podium. Anyone wishing to address the council at the public speaking portion of the meeting, please do so. And could you all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I'd be ready to see through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, please be seated. My please have roll call.
Alderman Ventura Morel.
Here.
Alderman Coop.
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Here.
Alderman Worthington.
Here.
Alderman Carey.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman O'Reilly.
Here.
Alderman Shabbitt.
Here.
Alderman Schott.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and approve same?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted or the minutes are dispensed with nine zero. We now go to dispense the reading of the general bills. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The general bills are dispensed, nine zero. We will now enter into the public speaking portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time, please. And just for your information, please address your comments to the council chair, for the alderman cannot engage in any debate. Thank you very much. First speaker, please.
James Shaughnessy.
Good evening, Mr. President and esteemed council members. Jim Shaughnessy, I'm a resident of the city of Kingston. And I'm also a member of the Kingston City School Board, and this year I am president. So I originally came because I just wanted to watch your decision on the intermunicipal agreement concerning Deed Stadium. And about forty-five, I guess it was an hour ago, someone pointed out to me that the video of the caucus, I guess it was the caucus last evening, was online, so I listened to The school board unanimously approved the intermunicipal agreement at its last meeting on September eighteenth. We also have nine school board members, so that was a nine zero vote. Everyone was very satisfied with it. I know it's a little different than what was originally discussed a year and a half ago, but it turns out that what the city needs in order to access the intermunicipal, I'm sorry, the downtown revitalization funding, is complete managerial and capital control of the stadium. And that's fine with me. You know, it doesn't, and it was obviously fine with everybody else. One thing that we did put into the agreement after that was determined was that we agreed to pay fifty percent of any capital costs for Deed Stadium. And that wasn't in the agreement when the discussion was the school district relinquishing ownership of the stadium. In that instance, the capital cost would have been borne completely by the residents of the city of Kingston. With the school district paying fifty percent of it, and within the school district, of course, we have, I think there's ten municipalities, some are only a few houses, but, you know, the town of Olster, the town of Kingston, the town of Hurley, most of the town of Hurley, the town of Asopus, a lot of the town of Asopus, you know, so they all, those taxpayers also contribute to our tax levy. Our tax levy, less than forty percent of it comes from the city of Kingston, and sixty percent or a little bit more comes from the other municipalities. So I think there's an example in the agreement that if there was a grant which required a million dollar local share, then that local share would be divided between the city of Kingston and the Kingston School District. So given the breakdown of how we raise where our levy comes from, the city of Kingston taxpayers would only pay thirty percent of that five hundred thousand dollars, or forty percent of that five hundred thousand dollars, and sixty percent would come from the outlying areas. So that would be saving the city of Kingston residents and taxpayers approximately three hundred thousand dollars on that capital cost. And I think that that's, I think that's fair, that other municipalities or residents of other municipalities should share in that cost, because all of the students at Kingston High School and the middle schools who primarily use the facility, you know, those students come from all over the district, so that part of the agreement benefits the city of Kingston taxpayers. We've also agreed to ninety-five, to pay ninety-five thousand dollars in annual maintenance costs with an increment of two percent a year. That's a little bit more than we've been sharing with the city. I mean, actually, this agreement, the original agreement goes back to nineteen eighty-nine, so we've been operating under the Deed Stadium Commission for thirty years. Last year, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, was our share, our budget for Deed Stadium operation and maintenance was eighty thousand dollars. So we're upping it fifteen thousand dollars, and an increment every year after that. I can tell you that I think the improvements to the stadium will draw athletic events from around the eastern part of New York State. It's very, a lot of those events now are going to Monroe Woodbury, because they have a first-class athletic facility. Kingston is actually more convenient, because it's only five minutes off the thruway exit, so how much better could you get than that? Dr. Padalino sent to the board members last week that with our fieldhouse at the high school, which was recently renovated, as you know, the state athletic, the state secondary athletic association has scheduled its volleyball finals in Kingston this year, and that's the first time that that has happened. So the improvements that go into Deed Stadium will certainly be an economic driver for the city of Kingston, and of course, it will greatly benefit the students at Kingston High School as well. So I urge your support for the intermunicipal agreement. I think it's fair for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ellen DeFalco.
Thank you for the opportunity, council president, aldermen, members of the press and public. Ellen DeFalco, sixty-six Glen Street, here in the city. I spoke during the March council meeting regarding how excited I was to learn that meetings will be video recorded and viewed on the Kingston Live page. This new format allows citizens to follow the actions and proceedings of council meetings. Interestingly, one can also view some of the committee meetings as well. This brings me to the point that each one of you should take the time to rewind the audio of the September twenty-fifth Public Safety General Government meeting and see if you come to the same conclusions that I do. I admit that it may be too painful to watch, but you owe it to yourselves and the public to do so. After viewing the one and a half hours of the audio, ask yourselves if you are representing your constituents to the best of your capabilities. I believe that you can do better. Now, this new feature for open transparent government should be considered for a sitcom for shut-ins and residents who don't have access to a computer to view these recordings. Maybe even a contest could be developed for the best and most appropriate title for these calamities. One final observation during your debating during caucus last evening, to sign a letter for the Public Service Commission. As an alderman, I believe you are not a private citizen. You are elected to serve your wards and your constituents, and it is a disservice to the voters who put you here if you think otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Joseph DeFalco.
I'm Joseph DeFalco, and I live at sixty-six Glen Street. I'm here to talk about a resolution for controlling the speed limit in the city of Kingston. Now, when this resolution was proposed, first proposed, it was proposed as a calming device to lower the speeders, control the speeders on the street, okay? It has now changed into lowering the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour, or having control over your own speed limit to do what you want, changing the wording of resolutions just before council committee meetings. No, I dropped something. When you can't enforce thirty miles an hour, you're going to reduce it to twenty-five. That's ridiculous. Another thing, too, is I attended another council meeting for another ward, and their concern was the same thing, speeders. Evidently, it's a problem in more than one ward. And they also understood that reducing the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour was not going to change anything, because they don't obey thirty. Who's going to obey twenty-five? Another thing I asked is why it wasn't enforced, and it was answered that it's not under police department's priority to enforce speeding. But evidently, with all the complaints I hear from constituents, which at one of these council meetings, the councilman Carey in this resolution said he heard it from his constituents, that they want to reduce the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour. So I went to the troubled areas and knocked on doors. Well, they told me they didn't see any councilmen, okay? And they're not in favor of lowering the speed limit to twenty-five, but they're in favor of enforcing it. It appears that this became a quality of life issue in Kingston, because that's all you hear, is the speeders, the speeders, the speeders. And when I asked what was the priority of the police department, they didn't know. What was their first priority in Kingston? It should be quality of life for the residents, and if the residents are screaming about speeders, that should be top of their list. Now, I lived in Ward Three for fifty years, and where I live, there was only one speeding ticket ever issued. Under my complaint, we boxed in one car, we picked out one chronic speed of seventy, eighty miles an hour, and we waited for them, and we caught them. But that was it. Was the end of it. And if you rewind the September Public Safety and General Committee meeting and spent twenty minutes deliberating over language to revise the legislative charge to change the speed limit from thirty to twenty-five miles an hour, I find it inexcusable, the fact that the sponsor of this legislation did not speak to the police chief. I mean, he got his narrative from Google. He spoke to a high-ranking DOT retired person, okay, and a complete advisory board or something, And it's not exactly representing the majority of residents of the city of Kingston, okay? I don't recommend you sending this legislation back to committee. I recommended you end this, because this council person has done nothing but pass useless resolutions. I'll give you an example of one resolution where he piloted the gun control, and he stood here in front of everyone and said, "We don't want to take your guns, we just want more gun control." Two days later, goes on the radio and says, "We can eliminate the Second Amendment." I don't know what that means to you, but it means to me that, you know, he's a hypocrite. He's a sneak. Says one thing, meaning something else. He's saying, "Let's control the speed limit." You can control the speed limit, you're going to lower it. You don't enforce it. The police department, it's not on their agenda, but yet, it's a quality of life issue because everybody complains about it. I don't hear them complaining about a holdup. I don't see shootings, okay? I don't see muggings. What is on the police department's agenda? What is their priorities? How many tickets do they ever give out? You're asking for lower legislation when you can't even enforce thirty. I'll be here to discuss more things about the future of Kingston also. I mean, take downtown, the waterfront, an historic area, beautiful area, okay? You want to develop this, you want to develop, not affordable housing, but luxury housing. And right in the middle of it, what do you got? Sewer treatment plant. And your nephew, excuse me, Jimmy, but went and bought two properties next door to expand the sewer treatment plant, right across the Trolley Museum's tracks. I think, you know, in the future, I think you should consider moving it somewhere else, out of that beautiful historic district. I mean, you could move it down to Eddieville, but you could discuss that. And I don't hear no discussion about emergency housing money, okay? Just useless, useless, unenforceable legislation, okay? It's, I don't want to go any further, you know, I can stand here and criticize a lot of people in this room, like a rubber stamping financial wizard over there, chairman of the finance committee, okay?
Address me, please.
Okay, you got that right. How about your nephew buying chicken wings? Just buying chicken wings because he's going to improve the infrastructure. Could have, you know what? For the infrastructure, he could have condemned the building, paid the assessed value, and argued in court that he needed it to improve the infrastructure of the city, but not pay five hundred thousand dollars for the property. Listen, I'm going to be here next month, I'm going to be here every chance I get, okay? Bringing up issues, okay? I suggest that you take this speed limit nonsense and put it away, and address the quality of life and enforce thirty miles an hour, because it started out as a calming device that led to, that's why we're lowering your speed limit. That's nonsense. Thank you, Jimmy.
You're welcome. Does anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? There's no one else signed up. If not, I'll declare the public speaking portion closed. We will now move on to claims and communications. Hearing no discussion, they'll be on file in the clerk's office, anybody who wishes to review them. Can I get a motion dispensed with the second reading of general bills and pay same?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The bills are paid, nine zero. We will now enter into report of committees, starting with resolution number one ninety-two.
Resolution one ninety-two of two thousand nineteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, to undertake a coordinated review of the city of Kingston, New York Open Space Plan.
On the question, Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did refer this back last month, and we got, we had, you know, Ms. Julie Noble come in to present some more information to us in regard to this resolution. I had some concerns about it, and so did some other people. And after that meeting, my concerns have been addressed. I will be a yes on this, but I just want to make, wanted to make sure that all steps in this process are being fully communicated to the public, and so that we can make sure that the public is notified when we're going to have meetings about this and any other issues in regard to this open space, so we don't have what we had last time, and some maybe lack of communications that some people thought. So I am going to be a yes on it, but again, I just want to stress and make sure that the laws and rules committee, going forward with this process, that is fully communicated to the public and in a reasonable time, so they know what's going on with it. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number one ninety-three.
Resolution one ninety-three of two thousand nineteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the implementation funding in the first instance one hundred percent of the federal aid and state Marchiselli program aid eligible costs for the Broadway Streetscape Transportation Federal Aid Project and appropriating funds therefore.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number one ninety-four.
Resolution one ninety-four of two thousand nineteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to execute an intermunicipal agreement between the Kingston City School District and the city of Kingston, which will provide the city of Kingston with management and capital control of Deed Stadium as per attached.
On the question, Alderman Davis.
Mr. President, I just had to let everybody know that I have to recuse myself from this vote.
Because you're employed by the school district?
Because I'm employed by the school district, correct.
Okay. Alderman O'Reilly.
Mr. President, thank you. I will have to also recuse myself with the same reasons.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Shabbitt, and then Scott Childress.
Thank you, sir. Thought you were looking right past me.
No, no.
I'd just like to take the opportunity to say, I really think this is a good idea. I think it's really going to turn out for the best for Kingston. For those who grew up here, and even those who didn't, Deed Stadium has been a part of our life for my whole life. A lot of us here in the room played ball there, we played football, we've gone to football games, you know, and it was one of the gems of this city. Recently, it's fallen into some disrepair, and not to blame anybody for that, but I would like to see the situation corrected. I think we're missing an opportunity here for a lot of revenue for this city. You know, we are not getting track meets, football games, you know, we're missing out on those for better facilities. I think this move, in combination with the money we receive from the state, is going to let us get Deed Stadium back on track, again, you know, make it one of the showplaces of the city. I think it's good to share, shared expenses is, it's a good deal for both of us. I think it's going to work out well, and I will be voting for it.
Alderman Scott Childress.
I'll pass.
You'll pass. Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Alderman Carey.
Yeah, I also think this is a, this is a good idea. I remember when it changed back the other way, not that long ago, it seemed, and the timing was right at that time, it seemed to have it the way it was, but circumstances change, and I think, I think the mayor and the school board, and I thank Mr. Shaughnessy, if he's still here, for the school board, for the give and take that went into this. I think it wound up being a very fair agreement that both, everyone can win, especially the city residents and taxpayers. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the resolution is adopted, seven, two recusals. We now move to resolution number one ninety-five.
Resolution one ninety-five of two thousand nineteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing an internal transfer of funds to repair the lower roof at the Roundout Neighborhood Center and replace the HVAC units in the building as per attached.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number one nine six.
Resolution one ninety-six of two thousand nineteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance for the sum of two million five hundred thousand dollars for the Broadway Streetscape project construction and construction inspection costs.
On the question, Alderman Scott Childress, and then Alderman Coop.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to say I'll definitely be voting in favor of this. I'm very excited about our, the city getting underway with this project. It's been long overdue, and I think it's going to have a major positive impact on Midtown. We're going to be completely redoing Broadway, allowing traffic to flow more smoothly. This is part of the general process of working on the city's infrastructure to make sure we have a great city that will last a long time in the future. It's also something that's going to help us in terms of expanding the way we use our streets. It's going to make it easier for pedestrians and people on bikes to use those streets. And as we're expanding the use of the streets, we need to take care that we look carefully at how we organize and engineer the streets to ensure that these folks are all safe and are able to travel smoothly and quickly through town. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Coop.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular resolution involves funding involving the New York State Department of Transportation for surface infrastructure only. Now, there's some questions that come up in caucus last night for some of my colleagues, and my inquiries have convinced me that although the funding is for surface infrastructure, to make the project go forward, I think we can be well assured that engineering and DP double will be taking a very good look at the sewer and water lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I call for the vote? Seeing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number one nine seven.
Resolution one ninety-seven, a bond ordinance dated October first, two thousand nineteen. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of an additional $2,500,000 bond of the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to pay part of the cost of Phase 1 of the Broadway Streetscape project in and for said city.
Long roll?
Alderman Shabbett?
Yes.
Alderman Short?
Aye.
Alderman Ventur Morel?
Aye.
Alderman Coop?
Aye.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Aye.
Alderman Worthington? Alderman Carey?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Yes.
Bond ordinance is adopted, nine zero. We now move to Resolution number 198.
Resolution 198 of 2019. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state Marchesselli program aid eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore.
On the question? Alderman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. When I first started running for, uh, Alderman, this was one of the, uh, concerns of many in my ward in regard to infrastructure. And I told them that I would work my best to improve the infrastructure in Ward 6. And so, and with this project for Ward 6 constituents in the City of Kingston, especially those residents that live in Colonial Gardens, Stuyvesant Charter, and, in that area, and to finally begin this process of installing sidewalks that they've been calling for and asking for, for so many years, and to, uh, be able to keep the, these, uh, citizens, these constituents, and safe as they walk in, back and forth to their home and to, uh, local and establishments. So, uh, it, it's, I, I'm, I'm thrilled to have this. I'm, hopefully this can get started in the near future, and so then again, those people who have no means of transportation besides walking, now they can be safe as they walk this, uh, busy roadway. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to Resolution number 199.
Resolution 199 of 2019. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance for the sum of $686,000 for the Safe and Accessible Flatbush and Foxhole Avenue project preliminary engineering and right-of-way incidental costs.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to Resolution Bond Ordinance Number 200.
Resolution 200 of 2019. A bond ordinance dated October 1st, 2019. An ordinance authorizing Flatbush Avenue and Foxhole Avenue safety improvements in and for the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $686,000, and authorizing the issuance of $686,000 bond of said city to pay the cost thereof.
Long roll?
Alderman Short?
Aye.
Alderman Ventur Morel?
Aye.
Alderman Coop?
Aye.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Aye.
Alderman Worthington?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Yes.
Alderman Shabbett?
Yes.
The bond ordinance is adopted, nine zero. We now move to Resolution number 201.
Resolution 201 of 2019. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a budgetary transfer of $1,167 from contingency to the 2019 Common Council budget to pay additional costs related to the new microphone system.
On the question? Alderman Coop?
Thank you, Mr. President. We all know that the acoustics in this hall are far, far from i- ideal, and, and many people, myself included, have difficulty hearing and discerning what is said. So, I want to commend the efforts of Kyle McIntosh for, uh, trying to make improvements to the system with, uh, controlling the echoes and the electronic equipment to make this happen. We're going forward, we're not there yet. We have hardware that could be used for three people, for the inherent impaired, but it's going in the right direction. I think it's mu- much, much, uh, needed, and, and we're getting there. Thank you.
Thank you. On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to Resolution number 202.
Resolution 202 of 2019. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a budgetary transfer in the 2019 Police Department budget of $87,000 to cover the expense of a carpeting project of the Kingston City Court and Offices. All costs will re, will be reimbursed by the New York State Courts.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to Resolution number 203.
Resolution 203 of 2019. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a transfer of funds from the grant revenue and Health and Wellness General Materials and Supplies Accounts to pay the expense of the AARP Grant-Funded Chess Playground Project.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to Resolution number 204.
Resolution 204 of 2019. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the execution of a pilot agreement by and among City of Kingston, Roundout, and Kingston LP and Landmark Place Housing Development Fund Company Incorporated.
On the question? Alderman Scott Childress?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first, I'd like to congratulate RUPCO for winning the Agent of Change Award recently given out by, uh, the TMI Project. This is a well-deserved award because, uh, RUPCO has done an amazing amount of work in the area, in the, uh, production, creation of housing, affordable housing in particular. They've got an award-winning building in the Lace Mill, they're putting up a, a fantastic building, uh, over on Cedar, and I think that this project will follow very much in line with those and provide a much-needed service for the City of Kingston. This, uh, particular pilot agreement is one of the few that the City of Kingston can vote on directly, and I am proud to vote yes for this, uh, because I think, uh, this is an excellent pilot. It's, uh, it's been negotiated carefully. It was an example of how the Common Council looked at something, had questions, went through the process, and found a way to improve the deal as far as the City of Kingston is concerned. And I think that the taxpayers of Kingston are going to wind up, uh, being very happy with this in the end. We've got to remember that, uh, before the current, uh, date, this particular property has paid absolutely zero dollars in tax to the City of Kingston. And now, we're going to see thousands and thousands of dollars yearly coming in while we're also receiving excellently constructed, affordable housing for those who need it most.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Alderman Davis?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, uh, give thanks, uh, to Dan Baker, and I know he went back to the, uh, to the, uh, to RUPCO after the initial proposal, and I had some questions in regard to the, uh, the dollar amount, and, and, uh, Dan said he would go back and speak to them, and, you know, from the initial proposal to the new proposal, and, and substantial increase in the money that we're gonna be receiving from RUPCO in regard to his pilot. And so, and I would just like to thank Dan Baker and the City Assessors and the City of Kingston for working on a, uh, working out a well and good deal for both.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else before I call for the vote? Alderman O'Reilly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pilot program is payment in lieu of taxes that we would have gotten if this property was sold to a business that paid the full taxes. So, a payment in lieu of taxes is less taxes than could have happened if we sold this property to a, a private business. That being said, this building and the people in it are to require fire protection, police protection, sewer and water services, and the DPW on a regular basis. That costs the City of Kingston a lot of money. The taxpayers in the City of Kingston will be paying that extra money in lieu of the money that we might have gotten if this was a private business. So, where do we make up that money? That money is made up from the citizens of Kingston, New York. They're the ones that are gonna be paying the extra dollars for fire, police, sewer, water, and DPW. This is basically a state project. They're gonna be pulling people from all over the state. The state should be paying those taxes fully to the people of the City of Kingston, so that it will not interrupt our, uh, taxes and the services that we will be getting. If we stress our fire department, our police department, our sewer and water, and our DPW, and we don't have any money to pay that, the stress that we're putting on it with this building, then our people are going to suffer, our constituents. We have to remember that. This is a payment in lieu of taxes. So, where are those taxes coming from? They're coming from many places, but the City of Kingston, this burden, this tax burden is coming from them. Let's not forget that. Okay? Let's not forget that when you vote for this. Payment in lieu of taxes wasn't for nonprofits to twist it so that they could get cheaper buildings and cheaper taxes. It was for businesses to bring in jobs into our community. This project is gonna be, bring in hardly any jobs to our community. And the jobs that they bring in are gonna be service jobs, service-related jobs, and, which is fine, but not many of them. Pilots are supposed to bring companies to our town, to invest in our town, to make it a, a better place. And then, of course, once they do that, that'll automatically pay back the citizens of that city. That's what pilots are about, bringing jobs to the community, right? Bringing, bringing businesses to the community so it re-enriches the tax base, not depletes. And that's what's happening with this pilot, okay? Taxes are, the tax base is gonna be depleted through fire, police, sewer, and water, and DPW. The taxpayers in Kingston, New York are gonna have to pay those taxes, those extra taxes, and each one of us is gonna have to sustain that burden. That wouldn't have been there if we sold this property to a private enterprise. So, in summary, we should not give this pilot in lieu of taxes to this, to RUPCO, because pilot in lieu of taxes aren't made for that. They're made to increase and enhance the tax base eventually in the city. This will never do that. This project will never do that. It will only cost people in the City of Kingston money, and it'll cost people in the City of Kingston money for a long, long time, 32 years. Thank you.
Alderman Scott Childress? Then Alderman Carey?
Um, I appreciate Alderman O'Reilly's, uh, argument against this. I just would like to point out one important detail, factual detail, and that is the city did not sell this property. It was the county's property. The county sold it, and so we are responding to that set of conditions.
Thank you. Alderman Carey?
Um, yeah, I, um, well, I got a couple things. I was, um, very much against this project from the beginning because I thought that piece of property, um, ultimately was better served for King, Kingstonians, as Alderman O'Reilly, uh, to be more of a, uh, if we could get a business there, or more of a commercial zoning. But we didn't have that. We didn't have anyone coming forth. Um, this, as Alderman Scott Childress mentioned, this was a, uh, property that was sold by the county. We did not have any say in this. So, we really didn't have many options for this, other than to have that beautiful building sit and rot at zero dollars. Again, zero dollars, that we were getting absolutely nothing for this. I, I don't think the fire department costs and the additional costs that we're gonna be spending on that property are gonna reach anywhere near $3 million in the course of this pilot. So, that, we're going from zero to $3 million total, and I, I don't, I don't quite see the math. The other thing I'd also like to thank, uh, our assessor, Dan Baker. I think people misunderstand pilots in a lot of ways because it's somehow, it's like the, the evil word in, in government, but sometimes it makes good sense. I think this one does. And again, this is coming from someone who was not supportive of this, uh, at all in the beginning. But RUPCO's done great work. They've made a lot of concessions. They've shortened the, uh, increments on their, on the amount they're paying. And the truth is, they, they really don't have to pay anything on this, technically. Um, so, I give Dan Baker a lot of credit for, for working this out, and, um, and I was never, when I was against the project, I was never against RUPCO. I think they do fantastic work, and I think ultimately this will be another, another good project that's gonna help a lot of people, including the taxpayers of Kingston, who I think are gonna benefit greatly from having money coming in instead of a property just , uh, sitting there, getting nothing. Thank you.
Anyone else before I call for the vote? Seeing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Resolution is adopted, eight, one. We now move to Resolution number 205.
Resolution 205 of 2019. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to expend funds in the first instance for the AARP grant for the purchase of chess tables.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to Resolution number 206.
Resolution 206 of 2019. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, supporting reduced speed limits from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour in appropriate areas of the City of Kingston, New York.
On the question? Alderman Shabbett?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to send this back to committee. Uh, we want to work on the wording of this resolution a little bit more.
Okay. Do I have a second to refer back? Okay, I have a motion and a second to refer back. On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call on the vote to refer, or to allow it to refer back. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that's, that's all I need, I'm sorry. Okay. Opposed? Hereby referred back, nine zero. We now go to Resolution number 207.
Resolution 207 of 2019. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the City of Kingston, New York, removing no parking signs on Pearl Street in front of the former St. Joseph School.
On the question? Hearing no, oh, Alderman Short, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank my colleagues on the council as we, uh, go through this transition of the engineering process that we have been dealing with the last six weeks, and I'd also just like to thank, um, the City Clerk's Office for dealing with the transition, working through the transition, and especially our city engineer, John Schulteis, for all the work that he's been doing.
Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to Resolution number 208.
Resolution 208 of 2019. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the City of Kingston, New York, adding a stop intersection at Winchell Avenue and South Wall Street.
On the question? Hearing, Alderman Carey, I'm sorry. Thank you.
My arm's too short. Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. President. I want to, uh, thank Alderwoman Short for, um, spearheading this movement to get our engineering department and other departments involved in, in some of these decisions. Um, I wasn't, I wasn't so sure it was necessary, but, um, I'm seeing a lot of, uh, good reasons why it is, and I think ultimately this is, this is a great idea, and once it gets, and there aren't really even a lot of bugs at this point, but once they get ironed out, I think it's gonna be, uh, very good for, um, for generations to come. This, this is in my ward, and it seemed like a no-brainer, um, this stop sign. Um, and then I got the, uh, engineering report back from, uh, John Schulteis, which I, I thank him for, and it, it was like, I don't know, I think I had to take a break and come back and read the second half later. It was so, it was so involved and so detailed, I, I couldn't believe that that much went into it in a relatively short period of time. So, so I think there are a lot more, a lot more things to look at in, in some of these decisions, and, um, if, if you see the, the amount of, of work and, and detail and references he made to, to arrive at a conclusion of a, a simple s- and detail and references he made to, to arrive at a conclusion of a simple stop sign added T, you know, made me realize that, yeah, this is, this is probably a really good idea. And again, I think Alderwoman Short for her leadership on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I call for the vote? Seeing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted 9-0. We now move to Resolution Number 209.
Resolution 209 of 2019, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York revising Schedule 16 of the Code of the City of Kingston to allow parking on both sides of Van Buren Street at all times except during snow emergencies as per attached.
On the question, Alderman, Alderwoman Person Worthington? Alderwoman maybe.
Alderwoman. I am a woman. Thank you.
You are.
I just want to say I'm happy that this resolution is going to go forth. Van Buren Street is in my ward, and I'm glad that the code is being changed and/or amended because I've lived up there for 25-plus years. And Van Buren Street, cars have always parked on both sides of the street. And so, when we thought that, when we found out that it was supposed to only be alternate parking, a lot of the residents were, were afraid that they were going to start getting in trouble now because they've been parking their cars out there. There's not much parking up there. Many of the houses up there do not have driveways. And so, I'm happy that this is going to stay the way that it is now. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Seeing no one, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted 9-0. We now move to Resolution Number 210.
Resolution 210 of 2019, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the City of Kingston, New York, adding handicap parking on Van Buren Street.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted 9-0. We now move to First Reading of Local Law Number 2. No action required.
Local Law 2 of 2019 of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York establishing clean energy financing, Energize New York Benefit Financing Program in the City of Kingston.
Alderman Short? Alderman Short?
Thank you, sir.
It's all right. You're fast.
I would like to make a motion now to suspend the rules for the purpose of sending a letter from the council to the Public Service Commission to express our concerns on how Central Hudson is handling their ongoing and long project on our city's streets. This would be an opportunity for us as a council to advocate for the city's taxpayers. We discussed this in Laws and Rules in September. I was given some misinformation, so we didn't have a committee report and move on, but I would like to, I think it's, time is of essence. This will help our street, streets be repaved better and to a higher standard that we should expect. So, I'm hoping that we can make this happen tonight. Thank you.
And I believe all the Aldermen received a copy of the letter and were able to read it. So, I need, I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Okay. Any question on suspending the rules? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are hereby suspended for the purpose of voting on the letter to be able to send it as a council to the Public Service Commission. And pertaining to the vote, the city clerk will mail it officially, okay? Yes. Alderman Scott Childress?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank Alderwoman Short for putting a tremendous amount of effort into this letter. I think it's very important for us to let the Public Safety Commission know that, on the one hand, we know it's absolutely invaluable for us to have the most up-to-date infrastructure, particularly when it comes to gas. We've seen the problems over Massachusetts when gas lines were not handled properly. On the other hand, there is a responsibility for the power that's putting those new gas lines in to ensure that it's safe and effective for Kingstonians to travel through the city after they've done their work. And so far, we've seen lots of issues that have made it very difficult for our residents. So, I think we need to let that be known and let this be part of the process so that we can hopefully call Central Hudson's attention to their need to do better in repairing the streets that they work on after they've done their gas line replacements. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to, Alderman Carey?
Um, yeah, I also, on behalf of my ward, and if I may, the rest, everyone else's ward, and every person who I know who has driven through the streets of Kingston, whether they live here, work here, or just passing through, who has gotten my ear on, on, on the condition of some of the streets, many of which are, are the result of Central Hudson's work. So, I, I think on behalf of all of them, I want to thank, thank everyone for supporting this, and again, thank Alderwoman Short for her efforts on this. It's a, it's a real good letter, and hopefully, it will, it will, it will achieve the desired result, which is action and assistance in getting our streets in a lot better shape than they are now. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote to sign as a body this letter, which will be sent to the Public Service Commission. All in favor? Oh, you want to say?
Does this letter have to be read out loud?
No, unless you want it read out. Everybody's read it. I asked.
I just wasn't sure if the public needed it.
The letter that, yes.
I would also just like to clarify that this has been on, because it was brought up last night at caucus, that this was a last-minute thing, but this has been part of our packet for the whole month. So, the public did have a chance to see it in the agenda. So, just wanted to clarify that.
Before you sign it, make sure it's what you read, okay?
All right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's adopted 9-0 to sign, and I also will sign it. 10. All righty. So, we're good with that. We're back in session now. Any comments? Back in session? Alderman Morel?
I would like to close this meeting in memory of Mark James Riley. He was 34 years old. He passed away suddenly on September 20th in Reddington Beach, Florida, in the arms of his mother. Mark was born and raised in Kingston. His father, Michael Riley, works here at City Hall, and he attended Ulster Community College. He was an artist and screen printer. And he attended the Ulster County Bosse's and became a master barber and instructor. He was a partner at Experience the Different Salon and Barber in Stone Ridge. He, it's always difficult to lose somebody so young. His family is understandably devastated, and I'd like to extend our deepest condolences on behalf of the city and on behalf of our neighbors in Ward 1.
I, I also want to mention from Jeffrey's comments here that the father of the young person that has passed actually is employed by the city also. He's the daytime cleaner. So, I just figured I'd show that out there. Alderman Worthington, then Alderman Davis?
Yes, I'd like to close in memory of Reverend Willie Harden, who passed away this morning, about 6:30 a.m. this morning. And he had been sick for a little while. He was a prominent pastor of the Riverview Baptist Church for many, many years. Also, worked for the Human Rights Department in the City of Kingston, and just a fearless and fierce advocate for human rights. And so, he will be missed, and the family is devastated. Willie Harden was woven into the fabric of Kingston. And so, he truly will be missed.
Thank you. Alderman Davis?
I'd like to close in memory of two people, Mrs. Trowbridge, as I called her Carol Trowbridge, who passed away on September 21st. And she's survived by her husband Donald and her daughters Jane and Linda. Went to school with Linda, Mrs. Trowbridge. Every time I've ever met her, she always had a smile on her face. And so, good. And good, great.